See Catherine Walker's coming on. That makes eight for us, the Budget Committee. Makes eight members.
Okay, so we're going to start your video.
No of one not coming. And has anybody heard from Darren?
You can choose.
I just, I just texted Darren, see if he was coming.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This is where you mute yourself.
And anybody heard from Larry Gramard?
I have not.
I haven't heard anything from Larry, and I thought Sed was going to be back in time, but I haven't heard lately.
Okay. Chuck Olson is not coming. So we're missing Chuck. Darren, Larry. I think there's one more. Sed?
Sed.
I saw, Wayne? Yeah, it's Catherine. I saw Darren this morning, and he told me he didn't think that he was going to be able to come.
Okay, well, thank you. I think we've got eight, eight out of 10. So it's Sed and Larry that we haven't heard from. So as far as I'm concerned, Al, if you want to start your meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
Yeah. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. With a little call, I think everybody is here except Andy. Andy's not here yet, I think, right?
Andy's here.
He's here.
Okay. That's right. Meeting in order. Now, okay, Wayne, you want to call yours now at the same time?
Sure.
Why don't you do that?
Okay, call the Budget Committee meeting to order. We have eight out of our 12 standing Budget Committees.
Okay. Now, we have a budget that we need to put up. Rick, I guess the best bet would be to put it up, and we'll just go down. We'll start at the top. Is Wayne here? Wayne's here, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's our point man on this, so I want to make sure. So we'll start right on page one. You think figure this out, see it.
These, these are the revenues to support the budget?
Yep. Go ahead.
You'll note that on line eight, we are budgeting for state subsidy for a bus reimbursement. Line eight, bus reimbursement. It's part of the entire state subsidy package of state subsidy, debt service, and bus reimbursement. These three together are what is the number that is identified on the ED-279 as subsidy for Jefferson Village School. And then, at the school board's behest direction, we're using $255,955.72 as fund balance forward to support this budget. Additionally, there is a transfer in from the municipal bus reserve of $91,000, because in this budget, there is an anticipation that a bus will be bought in FY '21. I'm going now to move to the expenditure side of the budget, and then we'll go down line by line.
Right.
I'll try to get as much on the screen as I can. I know it's difficult to see, but I, that, that actually works right there. So go ahead.
So we'll, I guess what we would do is open this up to discussion, question from the Budget Committee at this point.
I can, if you want me to, I can lead to down line by line on each section if you want, like we've done. Be glad to.
Okay.
All right. As far as, I guess the first quick questions I have on this thing, 10 and 11, we've got the change up in the corner of $17,000 down on teacher salaries. Is there a number of the total teachers in regular instruction?
That is, yes.
Yes. Actually, the down number on salary is deceptive because we're increasing a teacher position there. So you'll want to be aware of that. But as we have teachers retiring and adjusting different things, the salary numbers work out different. Due to our incoming kindergarten numbers and our current kindergarten numbers next year, we need two classrooms at kindergarten and two classrooms at first grade. So this budget actually reflects who's retiring, but then adding in an additional teacher. It does also reflect moving the .6 music teacher to 1.0, because we've really changed how we do our middle school music. And she's no longer teaching one classroom music class at five, six, seven, and eight. She's teaching multiple individual, small group lessons, and then an option of band course or music technology. So although this number is down, it actually meets the needs of the classrooms better next year with an added position.
I remember in the last meeting that there's one more position. I was wondering why it was down. So that's.
You'll also notice when we get to the article that includes special ed, that the teacher salary line there will go up, because we did end up going in the past year from one special ed resource room teacher to two. So I shifted positions. So the, the numbers work out between those two categories. But we are, with the, with the retirements we've had and the hirings that we've done, we're not increasing that number overall.
Great. And then the next one is the ed tech salaries. Is that just a new drop of a half of an ed tech or one ed tech?
What's happened is we used to have ed techs in general ed. They would support classrooms in general that needed it. Like a kindergarten class might need an aide to help that teacher, because they've never been in school. And over the couple of years I've been here, we've really noticed the need has shifted to special education. So I've retained the same number of ed techs, but instead of being paid out of Article I general ed ed tech, they're paid out of the special ed article, and they're supporting resource room and classrooms that have higher special education needs.
Okay, all right. Is there any other questions on this page of regular instruction from line 10 to line 38? Does anybody on the Budget Committee have any questions? Barring none, we'll go to page 39, lines 39 to 48. See where secondary public education is down $64,000, and the private education is just down seven. Is there a major difference in secondary education numbers? Is it down eight or 10 students?
The senior class and the incoming freshman class are not equal. So we have less kids going in.
Seven or eight kids or something like that, so.
Roughly, yeah, because roughly 10, 10,000 per.
Yep. And gifted and talented has a drop of 11,000. Is that less kids in the gifted and talented program, or the salary is down from 32 to 21? Oh.
Yep. Um, Rick? We have a .4 gifted and talented teacher that has stayed the same from last year to this year. So.
32 adopted last year, and you're asking for 21, so. Just wondering why it's so different. Same, same from last year?
Same person, yep. I'm wondering.
Yeah, I'm seeing that too.
The, the actual number, though, from the audit was 19,000, right, from the year 19?
Oh, you know what? I do know what that is. Last year, we budgeted for a partial ed tech to go into gifted and talented as well. We had no applicants for that position. So the number from last year reflected both the part-time teacher and the part-time ed tech, and this year reflects just the part-time teacher.
Okay.
Sorry for the mind glaps there.
Right, just wondering where 11 grand, it's a nice savings, but I wondered why.
Yep, that is, that is why.
And then, okay, so that total regular instruction is down 141,000. Almost 142,000. Any questions on regular instruction from line 10 up to line 48? Barring none, please go to special ed.
Standby, was there a question?
Yeah, maybe I'd.
Speak up, young lady.
No, you're muted.
I can't hear Joanie.
Rick, do you want to make me a co-host, and I'll unmute?
I believe I can do that.
You got it.
Standby for just a second.
When we're in this, this mode of being able to see the screen, and I'm only seeing four people, is there somebody that's seeing all the people? So if somebody raises their hand and wants to have a question? Is someone able to see all, all the people?
Yes.
The host can, Rick can.
And actually, all you do is change your, the way you view everybody. It's in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. It go, you can go from speaker view to gallery view. When you go to gallery view, you'll see pretty much everybody. Now, you're not going to, right now, I'm sharing my screen of the, of the budget. So you're going to see a portion of them unless you disregard my screen. So, but that's how you can see more than one person on the screen.
I just wanted to be sure. I'm seeing three or four people, and I'm trying to go over the budget. And then I'm, I'm not seeing people if they're saying, I want to say something, and they're muted.
There is a feature down at the bottom. I don't know if people want to use this or not, but you can raise your hand. There is a, a feature way down at the bottom center of your screen, where if somebody raises your hand, it will tell both Rick and I that they have a question, and we'll know to pause the meeting and call on them.
That might be a good idea.
So Peter Brush just raised his hand.
I don't see that.
You won't.
Yeah.
Only a host of a meeting will see that.
No, but I mean, I don't see how I can raise my hand, like.
I'm, I'm just going to make, I just wanted to make sure this works. I'm using this thing on Amazon Fire, and you have to swipe back and forth in order to see everything. So I just wanted to let you know it's working. I'll go ahead and sign me off.
Done.
Oh, I see it. Okay, found it.
Lisa, did you have a question?
I have a question, Rick.
Okay, go ahead, Catherine.
No, this is Linda.
Linda, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Linda.
Line 35, instructional textbook.
Line, line 35.
Yeah, instructional textbook is down 154%.
Yes.
Where are we getting to that?
Okay. Lindsay?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, I was getting somebody's video back on. Can you repeat the question?
About instructional supplies, line 34.
35.
35.
I'm sorry, instructional textbooks, almost $10,000.
Yes, we had budgeted for a new social studies program, because we were doing sort of a piecemeal one before, and we were looking at that as an option. We actually piloted Pearson's product this year. But with all of the pandemic and closing and chaos that the school has been experience, experiencing, we've actually decided not to pursue adding a new program on our teachers this year. And Pearson has agreed to let us continue with the pilot materials for next year. So that money, it's up, but it isn't going to need to be up as we go through this process. It will actually be down 10,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, that is new information. Rick didn't even have that, because I was on the phone with Pearson today, confirming all of that. So I apologize for that change.
Okay, any other questions on regular instruction? Which would be lines 10 through 48. No other questions. Let's go on to special education, starting on line 49. Okay, do we have any questions on special education? Section? It's up 211,000.
How many children?
How many children, how many children?
Sue, do you want to chime in?
Yes, I will. I just have to go grab the number. I, I didn't anticipate a total count. So hold on just one second, and I'll get you a number.
So just so you all know, I'm responsible for K8. Sue's responsible for K12 special education. So sometimes in this section, there's things I can't answer, because she's, you know, actually covers a wider range than I do.
Yes, we did talk about the special education contingency, taking the 20,000 out. So that was something we had in, on line 81 for a couple different years, and then this year, it isn't in there. Thinking that we, that you, the school committee has, has got this a tight budget, knowing what's going in different directions. Wouldn't need that contingency.
Well, we, I think we discussed with the school board that, that, and I think Wayne would, would agree with me. I know he does, because he said it before, that, that he and I are both not big fans of contingency budgeting. That if, if things happen, that, you know, we should, we should rely on the money in the budget that the town has, has given for the, for that, and let us manage the budget in, in that situation. So we, we discussed it at length, and, and they, they agreed that we would drop the contingency.
Okay.
So in regards to special education numbers, currently, there are 53 identified students for special education, with four students in grade 12 that will be graduating this year. With, also with eight incoming kindergartners. So you're losing four but gaining eight. So that number will actually increase by at least four students in the fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on special education? Lines 49 through 77 on this page. Go to the second page, 78 to 97. That's, that's the contingency on line 81 as shown. Any others on this page? Anybody else have any questions from the Budget Committee?
I believe Joan has a question. Let me unmute her.
Are you there, Joan?
Hold on.
I'm trying to unmute her as well.
I tried as well. Didn't work.
We're both trying to unmute Joan. There she goes.
Line, if I can find the right one. The special service social worker salary. May I assume that she is going to full-time? And.
Yes.
And that, the speech that way, do we, and, and is that person's time being increased? And is that shared? Is she shared within the district, within the AOS? The speech salary person?
Yes, speech is shared 50/50 between Noble Borough and us, but Sue's shaking her head. Chime in, Sue.
Yeah, so you, she's, she's a shared person. So 50% of her salary is paid for by Jefferson, and 50% of her time is, is shared by Noble Borough. But you only budget for 50% of it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on 78 to 97? So that would be the total, the total of special education change is 211, 616, up 20, 24.6%. Well, barring no questions, let's go on to the line 98. CTE instruction. That's just changing from 7,600 to 100?
It is. And the reason for that change is because you, we had this line open 90, 98 to pay for the, the possibility that somebody could go out of district for CTE instruction. Maybe if Bath or another program close by that, that we can get them to didn't have the program, then you were obliged to send them out of district, typically to Rockland, the closest one up there for programs that they had, that Bath did not. There's been such a change in the, in the calendars of the schools that are sort of out of sync now, that the likelihood is that you will probably not send anybody out of district anymore. However, the possibility does exist, and if so, if you didn't budget something on the line, then you wouldn't, you, you, we'd have to actually have a town meeting to open up the line. Because if, when you say you can't zero on a line, it means we can't spend it, no matter what. We have to go ask the town. So we're, we're putting a token amount of $100 on the line, just to keep it open for that scenario.
Okay. All right, let's go on to other instruction, for lines 99 to 113 on the same page. I see some things on sports and stipends or extracurricular. Is these for any of the spring sports? Payments out of any of these?
No, any spring sports payments this year are in the current year budget. None would be reflected in this. We're not currently paying any stipends that didn't happen at all. Any that were in progress do get paid. But any that didn't happen at all, such as baseball, aren't paid out. These do reflect a full year of sports next year, hoping that the world can have some normalcy.
Okay. I was wondering if they were paid or not. That was my question, so, okay. Any questions on other instruction? It's a change of 3,007.21, up 12%. Barring no questions, let's go on to student and staff report. Support, not report. I know the first line is the nurse. I think we've talked about the nurse a little bit. Is this a full-time, but it's contracted?
Yep, it's a contracted professional service through Lincoln Health, through Miles. And we do have her here, our nurse, full-time. In the past, we had not had her full-time, and we had to guess at what the, you know, a best guess, Rick's best guess, which is pretty accurate, on what the salary would be. And now that we've had a year of full-time, we can more accurately reflect in next year's budget what that full-time salary would be. And we do have students with specific needs that require nursing, and we do have allergies in the school, and, and with the screening and other things that we're going to be looking at next year, different health practices, it is critical to have her here full-time.
She works with the diabetics?
She does. Yep, she works with diabetics. She works with students with allergies. She works with students with physical disabilities that might require nursing skills as well.
Okay, any other, in the 114 to 142, any questions from the Budget Committee? Got Joan asking.
Go ahead, Joan.
Okay, thank you. The, let me see, I got to get the right line. The assessment for curriculum administration, what exactly? Is, is that the curriculum coordinator and a portion of the salary for the district, for the AOS rather?
It, it is. And the reason why that's up, Joan, is because in the current fiscal year, the entire cost of that program is being paid out of combination of grants and charges to the budget. Next year, we anticipate and already know that we have lost grant money to support that particular, that particular position. Now, so basically, I could attribute all of her salary to the, to the grant, what was left of the grant, what we got for the grant, and a portion of it to the general fund. What I couldn't, didn't have enough money for was for the health insurance. So essentially, the increase covers between all of the districts, just that portion, that portion of that position. But it's not an increase in time. It's not an increase of anything other, other than a loss of resources for that position.
And the, the library ed tech retirement, why did that go up almost 100%?
Well, that's a really good question. I, I, in order for me to go look, I have to, I'd have to stop the screen for a second. So let me, let me get back to you on that, okay? 129.
Yep, 129.
Okay.
Any other questions from 114 to 142? Can we go on to 143? I see the number 144 with the computer hardware purchases up to 40 from the 29, too. And is any of the new hardware anything to do with extensive remote learning, or all that we've been doing, any of that, or?
Yes, and no. It's a mix. We do anticipate some losses as we send devices that normally live in the school out to homes, and hope that people return them in full working condition, and, you know, return them in general. So we do, we, we do have a little bit of a cushion there for buying things. But also, this building is nine years old, and the technology that was put in here with the projectors and the smart screens, the classroom technology is usually about a six to seven-year lifespan, and we've been working our way through replacing the ones that are failing each year. So there's a little bit of a cushion here to outfit a couple of rooms whose projectors or screens are starting to fail, but also the cushion for remote learning access.
Okay. Any other questions from 143 to 149? So that will be it for student and staff support, is up 30, 30,000 or 12%. Almost 13, yep. We can go down to system administration on the same page. 150 to 161. Is there any questions on system administration? It's up about 6,400 or five and a half percent. Barring no questions, let's go on to 162, to school administration. Anything on school administration? I see on 166, the health insurance for principal is up 9,200.
Yes, I've had to move from, to a family plan.
I figured it was a change of plans, yep. Any other, uh, questions on school administration? It's up 23,011% for the total for school administration. Let's go on to transportation and buses. 180. I guess in this one, we, we talked a little bit about the bus purchase on the first page, and then we've got it down here on lines 193 and 195. We've got the 91 and a 115. And I guess somebody could explain, I know the 91 is the per- actual purchase, and then the 115, if that's out of a transfer from the bus reserve, is this two different buses or just one?
Well, I, I will, I will also pull Wayne into this conversation. He's really, uh, really on top of this. But I will tell you that the, um, the 115, 578 is, is a transfer into the bus reserve, that we actually are making that purchase for the, for the wrecked bus, the bus that was totaled, that purchase is occurring right now. And so the 115, 578 is in the FY '21 state subsidy to repay us for buying that bus. Now, the 91,000 is out of the bus reserve, uh, to purchase a bus within. Now, we have applied for funding for that bus through the state, but if, if we didn't get the funding with, a- as a part of an application, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to buy it, you know what I mean? Like, so, uh, the prudent thing to do is to budget for the bus, and budget for it coming into the bus, uh, coming out of the bus reserve, while we await to see if, if, uh, the state approves the purchase for FY '21. Now, having said all that, if there, um, if the state decides they're not going to, um, to fund that bus, you don't, you don't have to, to buy the bus. In other words, 193 is, uh, gives you the maximum flexibility to actually buy a new bus if you want. If you don't buy the bus, then you don't transfer in the money from the bus reserve, uh, so it's kind of a wash. So again, that 91,000 is supported by transfer in, so it's really a wash. It's no, no true impact to the expenditure budget, and the 115 going out is supported by 115 coming in. So again, it's a true wash with regard to the expenditure side of the budget. And you can see if, when you add the two numbers up, it's about $200,000 in expenditures that are added to the budget. And when you look at the bottom line number, uh, it really is, uh, it sort of skews the number in a way that, that makes it look, uh, that like the expenditures are a whole lot larger than they really are. Wayne, if you want to jump in on that?
Well, you pretty much covered it. The two bus lines are covered by the revenue on page one, line one and line eight. They're just in and outs for bookkeeping and tracking and future reference. And then, um, there's a 30,000 decrease in special services contracted transportation. So when you figure that all in, this, this section would actually be down about almost 32,000.
Okay. I know that in the past, we've had a lot of times we purchased a bus, and then we wait a year and sometimes a year and a half before we get reimbursed.
Well, and that's what that 115 is. We're buying the bus this year, and the 115 is coming in next year, and that's why it's getting transferred back into the bus account.
Yep, okay. Any other questions on the transportation and buses, lines 180 to 203?
Joan has a question, go ahead Joan.
Uh, line 190, is this because we have an additional bus, or the buses are newer for the increase of 83%? For insurance?
Actually, it's more reflective of your losses, your loss records. Just like, um, just like your car at home, if you have some accidents and...
Oh, 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 oh!
Insurance premium went up.
Sure did.
Okay, so that's the total, uh, 1203. Let's go on to facilities maintenance, 204. I guess if somebody could explain the capital reserve transfer of the 127,000?
Well, I would say that, um, we looked at, if you look on your revenue pages, we tried to keep taxes to the town exactly the same as last year. And when we did that with all the revenue, we wound up with 127,888 dollars left over that we could, uh, transfer into the capital reserve account. And that keeps the taxes exactly the same as last year, as far as this budget's concerned. Some years, we don't have any money to put on this line. In order to do that, uh, this year, we are fortunate enough to do it if, uh, the state holds up their end of the deal.
That's, that's a very good point, and I, I need to expand on that just a little bit for all of you. There's some news, there shouldn't be any news, that, uh, you know, we're entering in kind of a, an area time where we're just not sure what the state's, what the resources for the state are going to be in FY '21. We just don't know. It's prudent to, to have a plan, uh, a just-in-case plan, but until we actually know, uh, or have, really have more firm idea about what these kind of things look like, uh, we have to, we have to continue on, uh, and, and do the business that we were, we told you we're going to do, and provide education the way we, uh, the school committee has, uh, has agreed that, that should be. And so, um, I think if there is a curtailment, and, um, you know, your, your major, your resources basically come from the state and from, from the town of Jefferson. If there is, uh, some sort of, uh, curtailment, uh, within FY '21, um, this is a, a, a place that you could actually go and, and, uh, and, and find that money, because what, what will happen is we'll get an updated 279. Now, this will, this will make news, I mean, of, all of, all of you will hear it. And, uh, you know, we'll get a, an updated resource sheet that says what the amount of the curtailment is, and then we'll have to go inside these 232 lines, um, and find, you know, the money to balance the cuts in revenue, uh, balance those with cuts in expenditure. So this is a good, a good line to have sort of there. It, if, if they don't cut anything, good, good on you, good on Jefferson, money in the bank, safe socking it away. If they do cut it, this is a good place to go get it.
Police to go to make up for things if needed.
Well, in, we can only spend 32,000 out of this cost center alone. If we wanted more than that out of this cost center, of that 127,000, we'd have to go to the town anyway and ask for permission to spend more than that 32,000. So everybody will have a complete understanding on what the needs is, and then they can decide whether they want us to cut staffing or make cuts to the budget, or transfer this money into other areas that's needed. It wouldn't be used to increase the budget, it would be used to cover shortfalls in revenue.
So, so this money is in, is in, in addition to the fund balance, beginning balance of the 255 that we already have? This is additional money?
This is, this is, it's all one big pool of money on the revenue page. But if you take the local required and the local additional and add them up last year, and you try to make that equal this year, this is the difference right here.
The 127.
Yes, that would keep it exactly the same as last year on the local entitlement and local required combined.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll up real fast up to the page one, so I'll be, get you back up there. So, these two figures, and these two figures, add up to exactly the same amount, your tax bases, lines two and three. And so that's what, uh, what Wayne was talking about.
Okay, we're down in facilities maintenance, 204 to 232. Any other questions under facilities maintenance from the Budget Committee?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Linda, go ahead.
Okay, uh, 209. What is instructional furniture?
Yep, uh, we, with the addition of a classroom, we're going to two classrooms in kindergarten and two in first grade, I need to take a classroom that's previously been empty for storage and get some desks, basically. Uh, so instructional furniture is what a kid would use to be instructed. Non-instructional might be a desk for a teacher, or, uh, you know, something else in the, in the building.
Okay, and a question on 227, grounds maintenance has gone up, did we hire a part-time person?
No, we, that, John, you can chime in on this too, but that's both the grounds maintenance and it's fixing some lighting and electrical issues outside, so John, you can elaborate.
We're going to, we're gonna end up rewiring the exterior parking lot lighting. When they installed it, they, they used a solid strand wire, and when they pulled it through the conduit, it chafed. So we've had a lot of problems with wires burning off and short circuits, and... So that was, that's our fix forward, is to rewire it and get it done properly, so we end that problem. It also includes getting power down to the, I guess you'd call it the snack shack behind the ball field. It was originally intended to be there, but was never installed. So while we got them here digging up, we can dig down, trench it down there and get the power down there where it's supposed to be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from 204 to 232?
Yeah.
Actually, 233 on the next page, it's just one line. To finish, facilities maintenance.
Wayne, I have a question on the two, um, school equipment, 229 and, um, 230 and 231, just the shift in category.
So, school equipment, 229, you said, that's up 10,000. So that is a kitchen steamer? And that's, we didn't need any other equipment before that. The security services is us, um, in continuing to keep our cameras?
That line includes cameras for the gym and the cafeteria as well. We had some incidents in the cafeteria that we weren't able to document, because we don't have cameras in there.
Right, currently, our cameras are in the hallways and on all exteriors, so this would increase our coverage. Uh, John, that line also includes the, includes the crash bars that need to be replaced, correct? After nine years of crashing through them?
Crashing, yes.
500 times a day?
Okay.
The overall total is 138, 576, but I think, uh, 127,000 is only up 11,000 other than the, uh, capital reserve account. Any other questions on facilities maintenance? Barring none, let's go to debt service. I don't think we have, uh, a question whether we have to pay that or not.
Fortunately, they, they give you some money to do that. So again, it's, it's kind of a wash, just a pass-through.
Coming in and coming out. Then we go to food service on 236. Up, uh, 13,000. Has had a lot of the food service for, uh, uh, doing all the meals of spring or anything, or none of that?
Nope, none of this, none of the, next year's budget includes that, what's happening right now. What's happening right now has reimbursements coming from federal grants, um, specifically for COVID relief money. Uh, the regulations have changed, that's all covered there. Rick is probably a little bit better at explaining all of this than me, but basically, we have to fund the program, and when we take in certain amounts, it would, there's a shortfall, we're required to offset that each year in the next year's budget. But Rick may, maybe smoother at that.
You're, you're doing just fine, no. This, uh, the money budgeted represents the amount that the, that the program lost, uh, on the most recent audit. So, um, since we don't really have a firm idea about the, the gains and the losses in, on any given year, uh, we typically just take whatever the losses were in the FY, in this case, the FY '19 audit, budget it for FY '21. So, uh, you can see that, you know, you're running somewhere in the neighborhood of about 30,000 to 40,000 dollars of loss every year. Now, that's not necessarily a bad thing. Typically, food service programs in, across the state lose money. And, uh, I think the board, uh, will agree with me that, you know, uh, you know, raising prices constantly, because it's very difficult to up, down, up, down. This money is, goes to offset, uh, whatever losses the food service program has at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the fiscal, the food service program has to be made whole, and so this is the amount of money, um, that, uh, that we think will, will make it whole, um, so.
Okay.
Uh, Rick, I got a question on debt service. It says the change is down 32,000, but on the, uh, revenue page, it's down 39,000. And in the ED 279 I have, that was January, which I thought was the last one, it says we was going to pay 1,039,722, not 1,046,000.
Yeah. Let me, uh, I'll get back to you on that on Wayne.
All right.
But, um, I think I had a spreadsheet that, um... I'm wondering if, uh, if, because we had to make that one-time payment, and it... I'll go to the main municipal bond bank and see what the actual numbers are for that. But yeah, okay, got it.
It can't total out the same though, um, on both revenue and final page.
Okay.
If that's wrong, because it's different on the revenue page.
Okay, so let me, let me investigate it and, uh, and get back. Uh, I can't, again, because I'm sharing the screen, I can't go and do that, uh, so I will have to get back to you on that. If you want to change it, you can, you can certainly do that, uh, that's not a problem. I'll have to recalculate, uh, a bunch of stuff, but essentially, what your folks are going to be doing is, is approving the budget total, so, um...
Yeah, but the, the budget total won't be the same.
Right, right, so I'm, so if you want to take out 7,000 dollars.
Well, I, I don't know if that's what we want to do, because the revenue page says one thing.
Right.
That's what we need for revenues, and...
Yes, so, so let's say, let's say, okay.
Why don't you, why don't you take a few minutes, if you need to, and find out what that is? Because I, and on our original draft proposal, I thought we was at the 1,039,000. Because I, and on our original draft proposal, I thought we was at the 1,039,000.
Wayne, this is Walt, if Rick can't find that information right off, I think we should use the lower number. That way it gives us the $7,000 buffer, um, just to make sure so that we can close out the numbers tonight. I'd rather be over budgeted seven grand than under budgeted.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but you should be able to find it out. I was pretty sure in our draft budget, we had it correct and it's just, and it's right on, and it's right on the front page, it's, it's wrong on this back page for some reason.
Yeah.
I believe.
Should be 1039,722.
Okay. And I, I don't think that's gonna change our totals for some reason.
Maybe it's the interest from last year was 7,000 more and then they didn't get on the right line and it was supposed to be 344 instead of, 351 interest, it comes out at the 1,39.
I think it was just a mistake on data entry. Actually, it looks like, uh, he used the same top number as the previous year.
So the debt service principal?
Yeah, look, I think that might, should be different.
7,000 off and it was 688 something instead of 695, you should be all set.
The principal should be, 695, 61385? Yes, yes, so I'm gonna share the screen with you. Stand by for just a second. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Credits apply to the interest, starting in FY21, so. So, uh, I didn't get that update and, uh, you're right, you're right, Wayne, I should have balanced it with the, uh, the debt service coming in. But I, I actually used a, a tracking sheet that I used to, just to make sure that we're paying it down. So that's the difference, 6970, 67.
So the total, the total on page 13 and the total on page one are exactly the same. Because the revenue page one has the actual correct debt service number.
That's correct, this is the correct debt service.
Yeah.
1039,722, 96.
Yes, that is correct.
Yep. And then we gotta change, 235 or 234 has gotta be changed of some sort.
It would be 235.
No. Not if they add up correct on the front page.
Oh, well, yes, that is correct, you're, you're right, Wayne, you're absolutely correct. Everything is balanced based on this budget total number here. So if I bring this down, then I'm gonna have to take out, um, 6,900 bucks from, I could take it out from additional local if that's what you wanted.
Well, there's gotta be something wrong in debt service, because debt service is the number that's wrong. The total debt service is 1,046,000 and that should be the 1,039,000.
Right, this number, I believe the debt service interest is the wrong, wrong number.
Right, that's where the change would have to be made.
Right, in, in 235, right.
Yes. But that doesn't change the total for some reason.
See, it should add up to, um, these two numbers right here, 185 and 165, these two numbers. 25, 321, 96, plus, 165, 757, 0.82. Should be, should read 3, 351, was 79, 78, I believe.
And that's the number you have. Then the principal number has to be different. Principal, principal should have shrunk. When you pay debt, principal goes down.
Yeah, uh, actually, I think, I think it stays the same, Wayne, but look, here, let's go back and look at it again.
Boy, if your principal don't go down, then you pay your bill forever, because.
See, it, it didn't, here's, here's the amortization scheduled by the bond bank, it's all 695, 61385. Well, I'm gonna ask for indulgence on this particular issue. Uh, I think, I think Walt is right, we have the number to cover the debt service. Uh, it may be overstated a little bit. But again, I don't think there's any intent here.
No.
Content.
I think the total budget is reflected on the revenue page and on the final line of page 13 is correct. They just won't add up correct with the debt service number being off, that's all. So when we get to the debt service part of the articles, we will need that 1,039,000 number.
Okay, um, Well, that is right, you are, you know? 21, 221. 185, 321. 165.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That doesn't, you're right, it doesn't look right, and I don't know why.
Maybe page one is wrong and that's supposed to be 1,046.
No, uh, here's the reason why it's not that. Because, let me see if I can bring that up. Where are you? Let's see. I'm sorry, I have to go back, oh, here we go. Uh, here's the debt service amounts, right? Here. Stand by just a second, I'm gonna bring it up. Sure screen, this one. Okay, so here's, here's the debt service, 139,72296 on the ED279. It doesn't really ma, but it doesn't really match up to the bond bank.
But the state's paying it, they pay 100%, so it's an in and an out for us.
Right. Right. That's why it's, it's odd for me, because I, like, like I said, I just went, I look and see what the amortization schedule is, which is exactly what I was saying, is that I, I have, this lined up on the, um, on a spreadsheet that I look at to ensure that I'm, I'm using the correct numbers. But, uh, in this particular case, it doesn't look, appear to be so. Well, you know, here's the thing, uh, I would, again, I, I, I would recommend that you use larger number. Whatever the number, if it's, if it's, when it's paid out, if it's less, it's, it's a $6,700, $6,900 delta. You know, and it's, it's an add to the budget, yes. You know, $6,900 that you, you may or may not need, depending on when, when the bill shows up. I don't know what to tell you, folks, that's, that's where I'm at.
Rick?
Yeah.
Can I just chime in too, that I have that $10,000 Pearson supply that we're not gonna need to purchase that can come out? So that would help offset if you're using the larger number.
No, it's really, it might, but it doesn't explain the difference between what this screen is telling me. And, and the, uh, because when I add up, add up all of this, it, it should, you know, we, we, you got $6,900 less, but here's what the amortization schedule says, so I don't, again, I, I'm not, not quite sure what the, what the issue is.
Well, I gotta think the state knows, since they're the one paying the bill.
Yeah, we hope. They paid, they paid the two bills and it came out to 1,046. Then we put that 1,046 in the debt service out at the front. It, it evens out. And then, then try to find it.
But they're not gonna be cut. You kinda gotta go by what's on the ED279, that's what we've always done historically, because that's the only real way we've had to know what the state was gonna pay. It's part of our subsidy, that's why it's in our general fund budget.
And that's the 39 figure?
Yes, so if the state says they're gonna give you 1,039, you can't put on the revenue page that the state actually says they're gonna give you 1,046, because that's not what they're telling you.
Well, remember, you know, you're still, you still approve the warrant article. It may not be what you pay out, but it's, you're still approving, you're saying, you know, we will, we can allow up to 1046 to be paid out of that cost center. Which is kind of what I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting now. I mean, obviously you don't have to do that, but if you, if I take 6,900 out of here, I've gotta go up into the revenues and take 6,900 out. And I can't take, obviously I can't, I can't take it out of debt service.
Do the rev, do the revenues add up on the page, on page one?
They do.
I assume they do.
Yeah.
Well, then that number, there's no way that number could equal them totaled up on page 13 with a different debt service number. There's just no way.
So what would you like to do? Again, I can take 6,900 out of this local additional. I could take it out of fund balance. But if you're saying, I gotta take 6,900 out of this because of this number.
No, I think I'm gonna say keep it all the same. And worst-case scenario is, Lindsay just said there's 10,000 in that account there. And worst-case scenario, there's 127, which is why we came up with 127 for capital reserve, uh, because we thought that's how much we had left over, uh, when this budget was put together. So I'd say keep it the way it is and, and just know that, you know, we've got the money to cover it if the state doesn't pay it, but it looks to me like, if you're wrong, Rick, that the state's gonna have to increase that and we're actually just gonna get more, more subsidy and it'll actually end up being more carryover.
I, I, I think, I think you're right. Now, again, I just, just wanna make sure, um, you know, I, I'm not sure, um, well, no, I think you're right. But again, you know, because we've balanced the revenues with the expenditures, if you change those expenditures, I've gotta go, get got some money out of the revenue, so, or we just leave it as it is and plan months ago, when, when the bill comes in, um, you know, we, you know, the state isn't gonna tell you how much to budget, how much to approve in a cost center, even though it's debt service. You could, you can approve more if you want, it doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna pay, they're gonna pay it, but, you know, but this is still your warrant article and your budget to decide upon, so.
Right, but this section is the state's and I say that you change, purposely for presentation to town meeting, anywhere else, page 13, um, actually debt service get changed to the 1,039,000 as shown on the ED279. And, and everything balances out and it passes, and then if this, and then if we find out it's the 146 and the state actually pays the 146 and it's just an increase of subsidy and it's a wash, it doesn't affect our budget one way or the other.
Well, here's the thing, the problem is that because these numbers are asked for in a different part of the budget, I have to ma, I have to make sure they line up as well.
That's correct, so the 139 on debt service needs to correspond on page 13.
And then?
1,039,000.
Okay, so here's the, on, on the revenues, here's 139.
Yep.
So I'm gonna drop this number right here.
Yep.
By $6,900. That means that this number's gonna drop by $6,900.
No, no, it's not, because that number is exactly the same as it is on the front page, which has the 1,039,722 as debt service.
Okay.
Right? On the revenue page, debt service, 1,039,000. And the total at the bottom for revenues is exactly the same as total expenses.
Okay.
That squares up.
Okay, I'm gonna drop 235 by $6,900. Yes?
I would, I would make it exactly what the ED279 says.
Yes, I, I agree with that, Rick.
And that's how we had it in our original draft anyway.
I'm just gonna take a quick look.
I'm back.
Welcome back, Al.
See, here was the draft in, Wayne.
Yeah.
In February, 228, the same numbers, 1046. So I'm not, again, I'm not exactly sure where the change occurred, but anyway.
I don't understand how come they don't add up.
Yeah.
You can't get 6239 at the bottom of this page.
No, you're,
6239 at the bottom of page one with two different numbers.
We're, we're in agreement, I, I, I will change line 235 to 1039, 72296. And I'll have to take it out of line 235, yes?
Uh, I would think it would come out of principal myself. If your principal never shrinks, you never pay off your debt.
No, 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 it's, it, the principal is the, divided by the number of pays and then you add the interest on top of it. The interest always decreases year by year by year and I can, I'll show you that.
Yes, because the principal decreases if the interest rate's the same.
Right.
The only way interest goes down, if your rate stays the same, is if your principal goes down.
So, so here's, here's, again, the amortization schedule. The principal staying constant, divided by the number of payments that you pay. And then the rate changes the interest amount that you, and you can see that is, every year it goes down a little bit, little bit, little bit, little bit. This is very odd too, so. Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm, all right, I, I guess I'm open to suggestions, I, you, you want, you just want this number to say whatever, 1039?
Yeah, 1,039,722, that's what the ED279 reflects.
Okay.
And if it ends up being the 1,046, the state's gonna pay it, so it's not gonna affect us, because the state is paying 100% of this bond. So if they messed up on the ED279, they will be the ones to correct it and pay it.
Okay. All right, um, okay, I will endeavor to make that happen. All right, um, okay, I will endeavor to make that happen. Not quite sure I'm, how I'm gonna do that. Honestly, Wayne, I, I think all of these numbers by category, when totaled up, come to this number here.
Well, then the revenues don't add up on the front page.
Right, and that's, I think that's my point, is that if I, because it's balanced, the revenues and the expenditures are balanced, if I make a change down here, I, I have to make a change up here, I have to. So that's what I mean, is that I,
Do those add up, do those add up right there, to six million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
They, they should. I, I will be honest with you, I didn't independently do it, I let the machine do the work, but I will do that right now, two eight two six, one ninety, one, one one nine, nine twenty-five, one zero five, seven ninety-one, zero fifty-four, one zero five, one oh three nine, seven twenty-two point nine six, one five, five seventy-eight, one five six, two fifty-five, nine fifty-five, one seven two. Yes, the revenue numbers are correct, or, they add up to sixty-two thirty-nine.
Okay, well, then you gotta make it, the debt service on page thirteen, the one million thirty-nine, to match the front page, in order for them numbers to be exactly the same. If you're gonna make revenues equal expenditures.
Okay, so,
Unless there's other numbers that are wrong in here somewhere.
I'll tell you what, let me, let me do this, I'm gonna bring this up. Is that what I want, yeah, it is what I wanna do. All right, stand by for just a second, I'm gonna run this report.
Rick, you've been using this spreadsheet and the same formulas for a while, are they proven?
Yep. But, let me, let me just run these up. Six two thirty-nine, six two thirty-nine, so here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna show you what I mean, Wayne. I'm gonna go change that number. Budget entry, here we go. Twenty twenty-one. This one. And it's, is that number? That number is fifty-one hundred, all right. I'm sorry, I'm bouncing around here, but I gotta do that. All right. One oh fifty-one hundred. Okay, so there are the two numbers that are, that you see on, on the, here. So, in order for these two numbers to add up to one oh three nine, I gotta drop one or the other. And, and I, I don't think it really matters which one we drop, I, it doesn't, clearly, if, if, one oh three nine is the number, I just gotta, I've got to, to change one of these two.
That's fine with me.
All right, six ninety-five, six thirteen point eighty-five, three fifty-one, zero seventy-nine, point seven eight, equals minus one oh three nine, seven twenty-two point nine six.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a drop of, of sixty-nine seventy, as we said. Three five one oh seven nine, point seven eight. Okay, so I'm gonna change this debt service number to, or the interest number to three forty-four, one oh nine point one one. See it, uh, can you see what I'm doing?
It didn't come up on the screen.
Okay, so, so I've changed it in the budget, now, um, I'm gonna run this, I'm gonna run this report again. Now, can you see that, the new report here, one okay, so now, you should be able to see this is the one that I just ran. The revenues are six two three nine four two six three four, right? You can see that?
I'm, uh, the one I'm looking at is still the five eleven twenty copy, that's what's on my screen.
All right, stand by.
Same here.
Stand by. Here we go. Okay, so here's the update, can you see this now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so here are the revenues, didn't change any of the revenue numbers.
Okay, yes.
Just change the expenditure numbers. One oh three nine seven twenty-two ninety-six. Now the bottom expenditure number has dropped. So now my revenues are over, overstated a little bit.
Okay, well,
So now I, I go back up here, and I take out that sixty-nine hundred from one of three places here.
No, no. You add it in to facilities maintenance.
You can absolutely do that, if you,
Because that, that was the whole purpose of the facilities maintenance, anyway, was when we, is what we had left over to make things balanced, went into facilities maintenance. I mean, um, the capital reserve account.
Absolutely can do that, and you're right, that will balance it. All right. Capitals are clear. One twenty-seven, eight, eight, nine, plus, was it sixty-nine, what?
Uh, sixty-nine seventy?
Point.
Well, I didn't write the point down.
All good, all good, I get it.
I have six seven.
Six seven. Okay. So, capital reserve transfer now goes to one thirty-four eight fifty-nine point six seven. All right. All right, so now I'm gonna rerun this. Okay. Debt service one oh three nine on the revenue page, debt service one oh three nine on the expenditure page, six two three nine four two six three four. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and now facilities maintenance goes to six fifty-eight two eighty-one. Because the transfer now is a hundred and thirty-four thousand eight fifty-nine.
So, do you want me to make a motion, Al, to change that facilities capital reserve transfer to a hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I second that.
Makes sense. Okay.
All in favor, and you need a roll call.
Yeah, we, do we have any more discussion, hopefully? Roll call, Al votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Lisa votes yes.
Uh, this should only be the school board.
Yeah.
Andy, Andy votes yes.
I just turned it on, I had a blip.
There's a lot of that going on.
Maria votes yes.
Did we get Maria, is Maria there?
Maria voted yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, we have a vote five zero, yes.
Okay. So, i- in terms of the budget committee's review, the only, we had an article change, a cost interchange in facilities maintenance, and a cost interchange in debt service.
Yep. Okay. That's about it, isn't it?
I think that's about it.
Uh, Wayne, you guys need some time yourself, or just, I don't know, I can do that on you, but, uh, you can, uh, you can discuss with the budget committee members if you want, if you have any other questions, comments on the budget committee.
Everybody for their good work.
Let me tell you, this, this is not the first night we've been working on it, okay? You think it was? Okay, no questions there, right, Wayne?
Haven't heard any questions from anybody.
Okay, school board's all in good shape with it.
Guess we could come to a vote for the entire budget, and then we can, uh, go from there to the, uh, proposed lines for the voting?
Yes.
Well, that, actually, I think Rick has to fill out the articles, and then, yeah, and then we'll vote on the articles and approve them, and then you folks will vote on the articles and approve them.
Right.
Do a overall vote from the budget committee for this budget first, and then you go to the articles? Is that what we usually do?
No, usually you vote on the articles.
Yeah, cuz that takes care of it, and no sense having two votes, it's the same.
We'll let you guys fill in the votes. Fill in the articles.
Yeah.
You good with that, Rick? Hello, Rick?
Immediately, Rick.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're just gonna have to give me a few minutes to,
Okay.
to get these all squared away, okay?
Will do.
I'm gonna turn my video off, too, for,
Dallas Cowboys.
It's embarrassing, really, that he has that up, isn't it?
It is, he's probably turning the video back on.
Oh, man. Should've given him, given him a heads up to change his picture.
There's Andy.
There you go, Andy.
I like Andy's better.
Hi, Carol. You're not hiding very well.
No, I'm trying to, but it's not working. Hey, Andy, what's this? Did you see it? He's growing something right here.
Just a little COVID teen, COVID nineteen stash.
The kids like, girls, your girl, your kids like it?
No, they laugh. My wife hates it.
You better do something about it, Ben.
And Andy, just remember that this meeting is being recorded, so that is now, like, for life. You know that he hates that mustache.
Danielle has a lot of proof, then, he's admitted this in public, being recorded, that she hates it.
There you go.
We haven't seen Wayne yet on here.
It looks like Sam Elliott, you should keep it in.
Yeah, how come we can't see, why can't we see Wayne Powell?
You guys would keep my school board until it's gone, that would be great.
Danielle, did you hear, though, it's recorded, he admitted, you hate it.
Oh, it's awful.
So on another note, while we're talking, uh, happy birthday to Lindsay.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, hey.
Happy birthday.
Hey, who's ready to sing?
Not me, I'm leaving.
You don't want me to sing, yeah?
I am not a singer myself, in fact, I can sing in the house, and it makes the kids do their chores immediately, just to get me to stop.
What's the addition, Lindsay, another bedroom?
Yes, we're actually adding, um, a bedroom, a bathroom, and an office area. So the house right now has two bedrooms and one bathroom, and that's not enough for all of us.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, the addition's coming along fast, and it's blending in well with the house that's there, we're very pleased with how it's turning out.
Yeah, very nicely.
Well, so far we haven't had to look at Powell tonight, that's been a plus.
Thanks a lot, but I can look at you.
Wayne, you could chime, put your video on, and we could compare your mustache to Andy's.
Mine's a lot more gray. Not as bad as Blaine's, but getting there.
You're a lot younger, Wayne.
It's not the age, Carol, it's the mileage.
Oh, okay, we won't talk about that.
Chrissy Bryant saved me, she came up and gave you a haircut here at the house, I've been getting to look like Grizzly Adams here for a while.
I was getting to be Santa Claus until about a week ago, so it was getting really bad.
It was bad, I'll tell you, it is, too.
I think Maria's got the right idea, she looks to be sitting in comfort on her sofa.
There we go. Yes, comfort, all the way. We're at home.
Aren't we all?
Nah. I don't know, is everybody?
Not everybody's at home.
Did I see you on Catherine's screen earlier?
Um, Catherine's here in the school, Joan's here in the school, John and I are here at school.
I thought, okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
All right, I think, I think I may be there, so let me share the screen, and this one. Okay. Uh, I think this is, okay, so I will go down these, as I, can you, everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. To see what's on the town will be authorized to expend for regular instruction, two million, three hundred, eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents.
All right, school committee. All in, I guess, do we need a formal motion, do you think?
Yes, you do, and you need a roll call vote, Al, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make that motion, that we accept two million, three oh eight, two oh seven point two oh.
I'll second that, Al, well.
Okay. All in favor? Al, yes?
Wayne, yes.
Well, yes.
Maria, yes.
Wayne, yes.
Five zero?
Yeah.
Okay, budget committee?
Okay, are we gonna need to put everybody off speaker, so we,
Yes.
everybody?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion for the budget committee? Do we need a motion for each one of these, or we just gonna have a vote?
It's however you wanna approve, approve it there, Wayne.
They're just, they're just recommendations, so I think just a vote.
Just a vote.
I'm gonna say, uh, all those in favor, and I'm gonna name each person, Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna see if I, how many I got here. Myself, yes. I'm missing one person out of eight, do we have eight?
Peter.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight.
Eight to nothing, next article?
To see what town, some the town will be authorized to expend for special education, one million, seventy thousand, two twenty-nine forty-six.
Okay, that's, without, without a full motion also, right?
I don't, yeah.
Go ahead.
I think we can just vote recommendations, cuz we already voted to pass the budget. I think we can just vote recommendations, 'cause we already voted to pass the budget when we presented it to them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Al, yes?
Andy, yes.
Walt, yes.
Wayne, yes.
Maria, yes.
Budget committee?
Okay, Article Three. Uh, all those in favor, Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yeah.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa? Lisa? Don't know where Lisa went, Peter?
Yes, yes.
David and Lisa, and Wayne says yes, eight to nothing. Next.
To see what sum the town will be authorized for career and technical education, one hundred dollars.
Al votes yes. For the school committee.
Wayne votes yes.
Andy votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Maria, yes.
Okay, for the budget committee, Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself, yes, eight to nothing.
To see what sum the town will be authorized to expend for other instruction, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Recommendation, Al votes yes on this.
Wayne votes yes.
Andy votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Maria votes yes.
Budget committee?
Okay, Blaine?
Yes.
Linda? Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
To see what sum the town will be authorized to spend for student and staff support, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Al votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Walt votes yes.
Andy votes yes. Maria?
Maria votes yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
To see what sum the town will uh, be authorized to expend for system administration, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Yeah, Al votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Andy votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
To see what sum the town will be authorized to expend for school administration, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and fifty cents.
Al votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Walt votes yes.
Andy votes yes.
Maria votes yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself.
To see what sum the town will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight twenty-two, thirty-seven.
Al votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Andy, yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Wayne?
To see what sum the town will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two eighty-one, forty-nine.
Al votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Andy votes yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda? Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself.
To see what sum the town will be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments, one hundred, one million, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Al votes yes on this one.
Andy votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Wayne?
To see what sum the town will be authorized to expend for all other expenditures, forty-one thousand, forty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Al votes yes.
Andy votes yes.
Wayne votes yes.
Walt, yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself.
Alright. So, this article, Article thirteen, is a combination of the state subsidy plus the um, EPS local. So, you have to approve your required local, plus the subsidy, you have to appropriate it, and that you're only gonna fund up to um, one, one-one-nine. No, excuse me.
Nine-two-five?
Stand by for just a second. You're gonna raise your required amount. Yes, so this is two-eight-two-six, one-nine-zero-point-zero-zero. This is how much you have to raise of your this is how much you have to raise, and then the amount that you are appropriating is two-eight, two-six, one-nine-zero, plus seven-ninety-one, zero-fifty-four-point-zero-five, plus one-oh-three-nine, not one-oh-three-nine. One-one-five, Okay. I believe in the past, we've gotten dinged by not having a debt service article. So, in the, in this case, I'm gonna, in this case, I'm going to uh, put the debt service in this, as your required local, or your total appropriate. I may have to split it out after I talk to the state, but in the past, they've wanted a separate article just for debt service. Does, I know it's a little bit confusing, even to me, but there it is. Okay, so um, this is three, seven-thirty-two, eight-twenty-two-point-six-one. Okay, so you're recommending that you appropriate that amount of money, and you're gonna raise two-eight-two-six, one-nine-zero. Because if you don't pay the two-eight-two-six, you don't get all the subsidies, so this, this article just affirms that you're gonna, you're gonna raise the, the required local in order to get the full amount of subsidy.
Which is including the debt service.
Which is including the debt service.
Okay.
But I think, Wayne, like I said, when I, when they send these in, sometimes they,
Hey.
they ding me to have a different article for, just for debt service, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it there for right now.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, uh, school committee?
I vote yes, Al.
Wayne votes yes.
Yes.
Maria votes yes.
Walt votes yes.
Budget committee?
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda? Is Linda there?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself.
Okay. Now you're voting on the additional local in the amount of one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine twenty-five oh five.
Rick?
Yeah.
On the upper thirteen, are we supposed to have the same figure on the budget committee line, too, with the dollar amount?
Right here? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill those in in just a, a second, I,
Okay.
Just trying to, trying to um, expedite the process a little bit. Okay, so for this one, it's the additional local is one-one-nine, one-one-one-nine, nine-two-five-point-zero-five. The school committee is recommending it. And I don't think we need a vote on it, guys, but you can have one if you'd like, if you'd like to put a vote in for school committee.
Although, yes, I mean,
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne votes yes.
Alright. Walt, yes.
Andy, yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself.
Okay. And the total budget, six-two-three-nine-four-two-six-three-four.
Yes, Al.
Wayne, yes.
Walt, yes.
Andy, yes.
Maria, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself.
Okay, um, now adult education, stand by for just a second, need to pull that up, and this is just a budget committee a budget committee vote.
Is this, last year was at one-fifteen?
Yeah, but it's a little, uh, yeah, that's a total amount of the budget, Wayne, but your portion of that is maybe it's so, for the adult ed budget, she's requesting nine-one-three-six-four-two, nine-one-three-six-point-four-two. Nine-one-three-six-point-four-two, as your local share.
Okay.
So, you need to vote on that.
Just the budget committee needs to do this?
Yes, just because uh, adult ed, it doesn't really fall under the purview of of the school committee at Jefferson.
Okay.
You guys need to vote on this.
Alright, Peter?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Blaine?
Yes.
And myself. We even did it backwards, we did good.
See it for penitentiary.
That's, that was the idea.
I just, I wanna say to all of you, that this could've turned into something really not all that pleasant, but it, just because of the format, but you all have worked very hard to make this happen, and I know it's difficult circumstances, and I just wanna say, thank you, the school committee's kinda been doing this, getting you all in the same room to do this, uh, you did some good work tonight, asked some really good questions, and, and I personally appreciate it, uh, thank you so much, really.
We appreciate you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you to all the budget committee to make it, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
The school committee is adjourned.
Yep, we need to adjourn, the budget committee is adjourned.
There we go.
Enjoy the rest of the night, happy birthday, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, everybody.